Okay, it's time to start the meeting Tuesday. I guess it's September fourteenth.
All day.
All day of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Study Session. It's good to be back in person. We'll go ahead and start with roll call, please.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer here, Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
And President Robert Uten.
Here. And public comment. Item number one.
Thank you, President Uten and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. First, a couple of gentle reminders. Having tried to watch one of these meetings from home, it's very important that everybody use the microphones. Otherwise, the people at home cannot hear what you're saying. Number two, now that you're back in person, the agenda really should say where the meeting is being held. That is on the website, but it really should be on the agenda itself. And then the comments I wanted to make are related to compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three. And I wanted to follow up on the comment I tried to make virtually at your last study session, which is, has the district heard back from the city of Costa Mesa or the city of Newport Beach as to what their total organic tonnage is that they're reporting? So that we know what fraction of that the organics collected by this district are. And then to follow up also on that, as I mentioned there, under SB thirteen eighty-three, the organics includes not just what goes in our organics cart, but also paper and cardboard. So do we have any current? What is the most current estimate we have for the tonnage of cardboard and paper being collected in the district? And the fraction of that that is being recovered? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Scott, do you have any comment on that? Or should we agendize the thing for the board meeting?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't have information for Mr. Mosher at this time, but we can report back at a later time.
Okay, we'll get back to you, Jim. Does anyone else wish to speak in public comments? If not, we'll go on to the introduction of the engineering technician Andrew Wong. Is that you, Mark?
Thank you. Thank you, President Newton, Costa Mesa Board. I'd like to introduce this morning our new engineering tech, Andrew Wong. Andrew comes to us from the city of Manteca. I think he spent about two years there. Before that, he worked for, I think, the city of El Monte in their Public Works Department. And he graduated from UC Riverside with an environmental engineering degree. I will say that Andrew has worked in, I'll say, public works permits and doing some of the things that we do here. So he was a perfect fit for our organization. With that, I'd like to introduce Andrew Wong.
Hi, my name's Andrew. Good to be here.
Yes, good for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been here about three weeks now, and everyone's been very welcoming. They've been very great to me, and I'm just glad to be here. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Andrew, and welcome. Andrew may need to be introduced a couple of times because I've met him a couple of times and he didn't recognize me either time. I think the other board members think that's probably all right. Thank you, Andrew, and welcome.
Welcome, Andrew.
All right, we'll go on to code enforcement report. Dave?
Good morning, President Newton and members of the board. My name is David Griffin. I'm the interim code enforcement officer. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging, graffiti, and trash container enforcement. For the month of August, the CMSD interim code enforcement officer focuses efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging residential trash carts left within public view. In the month of August, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the CMSD code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most scavenging complaints, the alleged violations take place in the early morning hours. In order to address resident concerns, the interim code enforcement officer is patrolling streets by six thirty a.m. Included are the instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer while was investigating specific complaints. For the month of August, I caught twelve scavengers throughout the city. The back page kind of has a summary of the locations of the days and how many on those days. Wednesdays was a hot day this month. And Mondays as well. Trash container enforcement in the month of August. There were a few customer complaints reported to the district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. I cited or tagged a hundred and thirty carts in the month of August. Again, a list of those is listed of location by streets and how many on that street. Any questions to the scavenging or trash container enforcement?
Yeah, just on the scavenging. I think I've asked this before, but repeat offenders, if you will, are you tracking their names? Or I mean, at this point, you're probably saying, seeing the same people, or is that not the case?
There is a few, but again, it's Hispanic, this particular gentleman. The last time I had interaction with them, I used my broken Spanish a little bit, and he kind of understood a little better. But again, I'm not running into the same people over and over.
Okay.
This particular guy is over on the east side, or not the east side, I'm sorry, on the west side. I want to say like the Victoria area. And he's walking, so he kind of blends in. And so it's been difficult sometimes to, you know, find them as they're recognizing me, you know, going past or patrolling in the area.
Right. I mean, just going forward, you know, I know the likelihood of getting anyone to pay the citation, all that, but got to do something if they are, if you're starting to see repeats, that would. It's just a bugaboo of mine, but.
No, no, and I will take direction from the board on how you want to handle those situations. Again, as you mentioned, I threaten citation, but the understanding, I'm not sure if they really do.
Yeah.
And again, I think it's beyond worrying about a citation that I need to, you know, supplement my income with what they're doing, so. But it has decreased. So I'm having to say, and I'm identifying areas that need higher patrol. And so it's working.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not a problem. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes. I, okay, I'm sorry. This is not what I wanted to talk on first, but I just wanted to say, when we do our newsletter and we do it in Spanish or Mexican, whatever you say, anyway, do we say about the trash and about the citation that is given if anything occurs?
Anything we, anything we say in English in the newsletter is repeated the same in Spanish, so.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to be sure because I didn't read it right. Aside from that, I just wanted to say, if you all remember on the board when Jay Humphrey came here and complained about the trash and each side of the street and so forth, okay, well, Sandy Guinness, I was on the Facebook with our excitement about all the things we got of awards. And at the very bottom, she wrote a long note about just, it sounds like Jay Humphrey again, you know, and that they're having trouble on both sides of the street and that they don't come and, you know, I have it in my face, in my, what do you call it, in my cellphone. But anyway, I wish we could, and I thought I spoke to it, but she apparently never got it. So I'm very interested in us being able to, you know, talk to her, even though she's very upset. I think she has a reason for it, and she needs to be calmed down so that she understands that we're on it, that the board really cares what's going on, and that we're, you know, doing something about it right now. I feel we just should not leave it, period.
And if you were to forward me that address, I would, you know, patrol in those areas and we can take photos and see what's going on.
After, after the meeting, I'll gladly share my cellphone with you. Okay.
David, I can show you the street Ms. Guinness lives on.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that would be fantastic. You know, I mean, at least provide, you know, some extra patrols and if I see stuff that I can, you know, I handle, I'll take care of that to help the residents.
Came the same time as, she should have been here with Jay, but she wasn't, and, you know, since we've changed things around, hopefully, but I just want to be sure that she's recognized at least.
Is she complaining about scavenging?
No, she is complaining about one side gets it, the other side doesn't get the trash picked up, the same thing, you know.
It's not just that street, we've got some others, so I, I can throw a rock at her house from my office, so if you're over there, let me know, or, so. Okay. I mean, we're addressing this. I think CRNR is aware. Back to the scavenging a little bit. It's interesting to watch these scaveng, if Brett, some of these same people, having an alleyway behind my office, I see a lot, I see, and you know, David, you've seen it, but during Labor Day week when the trash was delayed a day, I don't think the scavengers, I don't think the scavengers, first of all, read the newsletter. They don't, they don't know we have a delay. There were so many of them that, three or four of them, that looked lost. I mean, they didn't know what to do. There were no cans out to scavenge, but. Yeah, yeah. Just to say, but the thing with the missed pickups, I think we're addressing that and and to focus on just one person who's getting missed is a little bit counterproductive. I think we need to look at the bigger issue.
It's a whole street.
Yeah.
Both sides.
I know. Sorry.
All right. I just had a question about the trash carts in public view.
Yes, sir.
When you go out there, how many homes don't have a place to store them?
I've run into that now in a few situations over on the east side. Some apartment complex, seventeen seventy-six Westminster, the owner reached out to me. And I think the problem over there is they're renting the little side yard out to the tenants for maybe animals instead of using that area to store the carts. I was informed by the complainant that they used to store the carts in the back, and now they've just, you know, store them in the front in the driveways and there's eight carts on each side. It's kind of, they're shaped like an L. And so, you know, one side's got eight carts, and then the other side's got eight carts. And so I'm going to meet with them and try to address, I've already thrown out, if you don't want to, you know, put them behind the fence, maybe you could build some kind of a barrier to block those. So we're going to meet within the next few weeks when they come back in town and try to address that. Another issue is another complaint off of Tustin, which it's a rental on the left, and he doesn't have, it's an alley. He doesn't have a garage in the alley, but he's storing his carts in the alley. And it's affecting the traffic in that alley. And so I need to address that with him as well to put those behind the gate like they used to be before he moved in. And that'll solve the problem. I met with him the other day, and he was open for discussion with the whole thing. So I know we don't really cite carts in the alley, but normally in those alleys, they have garages with an inset and kind of get them out of the traffic area, so it's not blocking traffic. Are these single-family homes, David? This rental unit is a multi, you know, family unit, but it's literally on the, right on the other side of an alley with nice, single-family homes. I know the city, city has an ordinance for for alleyways that the owners of the property have to enclose their trash containers. If you take a look on Royal, on the alley off Royal Palm, they're all enclosures because the city, it's a city ordinance. I had a, one of the owners contacted me when he got notice from the city. The city, he said, the city's making me build an enclosure for the bins for my four units. So apparently the city isn't applying that ordinance over in the other, on the east side alleys. And this is Costa Mesa, so, I mean, I could follow up with the code enforcement office department over there and see, you know, what kind of, it's not that they're parking in the alley, it's an issue with if this particular incident, they've had a porta potty because they're doing construction. And so with his carts and the porta potties causing a traffic jam, you know, in and out of there. And so the particular resident, you know, asked me if I could, you know, go in and, you know, do anything with this enforcement area. I would appreciate if we could follow up then with, with city code enforcement and just find out why they're not applying that ordinance on all, on all the alleys. Absolutely, not a problem. That's going to be probably even more critical if we go to a third cart.
That was the point I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
Critical of what?
The third cart. We have to go to a third cart. Right now, there's no room for two carts.
Yeah.
And if we go to a third one, that's going to be one of the things we have to consider.
Yeah. David, I would, I would check with the, the language and the code enforcement view of, you know, what's going on with the carts in the alley. The reason for that ordinance for the city is because of obstructions that might delay police or fire, especially fire. And so when you get multiple things like construction in the alley, you know, that additional imposition on, and fire trucks getting in that alley.
Correct.
I believe that's the reason for the city's ordinance, but.
Understandable. I've been, you know, in the alleys off of, you know, say, behind Broadway. And, you know, some of those, it's not a lot of room. If the trash truck's in there, you're waiting. I mean, there's no way to get around.
Well, the trash truck can move out of the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Certain things can't.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll check with that and follow up and get the definition.
And I know Arlene wants to ask another question or make a comment, but staff, I would, for David's benefit, since we have someone that writes articles in Spanish or writes half the newsletter in Spanish, I would give him what he needs to converse with, you know, the Spanish-speaking people in writing. I mean, hopefully, they're literate, but.
I have a Google Translate on my phone, and so.
Okay.
It helps me to, you know, a little bit kind of let them understand.
Well, just a paragraph, you know, that you could show them. Okay.
Arlene?
Yes, this is more probably to Scott, our general manager, but I've had a call on this. I don't know if we're paying attention or if we're doing anything with the city on the fire trucks that go in that are being, actually, I should start out by saying the condos that are built or townhouses and that we were, for a while, we were really worried about if the fire trucks or police can get around, you know? And I don't know if anything is accomplished right now, since they're still building. Are we still on top of it, or?
Well, yes, I mean, we review those plans, and before the, the, the city approves any development, they make sure that we give a will serve letters. And so we always give a will serve letter, saying, yes, it's good to go. So, yes, we still.
Okay, I did answer that way, but I was going to call back if I was wrong. Okay, thank you.
Got a quick question. Do we still have somebody representing us when they meet with the city planning?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I know we did that in the future, so we still, who goes to represent us?
That'd be Mark and or Andrew.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, thank you, David.
Thank you. Welcome back, sir. Good to see you.
Good job.
Okay, next item is receiving file report from Steve Cano and Joel Ortiz. There's a gender report there. Do any of the directors have any questions or discussion about their attendance at the meeting and what they've, what they've learned?
Yeah, Mr. President, I apologize, but Steve Cano and Joel Ortiz are out in the field right now, so they can't be here this morning, but if you want them to return, we can re-agendize this, and you can ask them some questions if you want. Otherwise, we did provide you a brief narrative of their attendance and what they learned at the tri-state seminar.
Do any of the directors want to hear with them reading what they've learned in person?
I would, I wouldn't mind it personally.
Okay. I think, yeah, maybe at the next study session.
Are they working overtime to make up for their losses at the tables, or?
I would have to be.
Mr. President, I just might suggest, because our next study session, they'll probably be out in the field as they should be. So why don't we just, if you have questions, email them, and then maybe they could just respond. I'm just suggesting, because my guess is they'll be in the field next month. I don't think their presentation would take that long, probably five minutes. I'd always like to hear from them, because.
If they're available, you know, let's give them one more, one more study session, and if they're available.
They could be first on the agenda if need be.
Let's see. Item number three, provide comments and questions for the community-wide citizen survey.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in our budget, we budgeted forty thousand dollars to do a citizen-wide survey, which we typically do every two years. The last one we did was in two thousand and nineteen. So we solicited requests for proposals from qualified public research firms. I believe we received five proposals. We end up awarding the contract to True North Research out of Encinitas, which is down in San Diego. As considered, we considered their proposal as best value. And so they are going to be interviewing and asking questions to about, to one thousand ratepayers in, within our district jurisdictions. So today is an opportunity for the board to submit type of questions you want to ask your ratepayers. And then this True North Research will begin those questions via cell phones, telephones, and emails and texts. I do want to mention to the board that last week we did present this item to the citizens advisory committee and ask for their input, and attached in your staff report are some, some sample questions from Chair Ellie Katz, which is in your reports, you can see that in your staff report. This morning, via Zoom, is Dr. Timothy McClarny, who's the president of True North Research, and he is going to describe a little more details on the methodology and work plan that his firm will implement to successfully complete this project. And then we will open up to the board to see what kind of questions you want to include in the survey. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. McClarny, and he'll explain the methodology and work plan, so.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Tim McClarny. I'm the president of True North. And we're a firm that over the last twenty years has specialized in working with public agencies around the state in using surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. A little background, my business partner and I have designed and conducted over a thousand research studies for public agencies. And about half of the research we do kind of falls under that broad umbrella of what I would call customer research, like what you're doing here, where you want to reach out to customers, understand what their needs and priorities and preferences are with respect to the services that you provide. It's also an opportunity to understand how well you, as an agency, are meeting those needs through your existing services and facilities. And, you know, gather some updated information in terms of, you know, what interactions I may have had with you over the past year, how those interactions went in terms of customer service, et cetera. What I've done is prepare a brief PowerPoint presentation this morning, kind of gives an overview of the research process moving forward for the survey. And, you know, as I go through this PowerPoint presentation, I welcome questions from the board as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. And then again, toward, at the end of this, I'm interested in hearing from the board, you know, the types of topics that you, you know, you may want to include in the twenty twenty-one survey. This is not the first time the district has done a survey like this. There was, I think, the most recent one was in twenty nineteen. And so, you know, there's probably some questions from that study that we want to carry over so that we can track how opinions may have changed over the last two years. But every time we do these types of surveys for clients, it's also an opportunity to make it a bit dynamic, right? And to include topics that are particularly interesting in that particular time period with each cycle having some new questions. So if it's okay, I will share, I think, my, I don't have the ability to share right now, but I have the PowerPoint on my screen and am ready to share if I can get privileges for that. Okay, it looks like that worked. Thank you. So I'm assuming everybody can see this PowerPoint presentation here with the graphic on the front. And so let me start out by reminding us a little bit about what the requirements are of a statistically reliable survey. You know, anybody can do a survey. Anybody can go out and talk to people and ask some questions and get numbers back. You know, but in order for that survey to be statistically reliable, meaning that it's a, it's an accurate representation of what the true values and opinions are in a community, it needs to meet three standards. The first is validity, and you often hear validity and reliability used sort of interchangeably when people talk about surveys. They're actually two different things. Validity is, and reliability refer to the questions that we're using to measure people's opinions. And validity refers to the idea that you're actually measuring what you're trying to measure, right? That that question, in fact, is a good measure of the underlying attitude or opinion that you're trying to measure. And the best way to sort of illustrate validity is to talk about an example that was done where validity failed. And so there was a national survey that was conducted by a financial firm, and they wanted to get an understanding of stock ownership around the country. And so they, they did this nationwide survey to understand, you know, what sort of financial stocks people own. And when they got the numbers back, they saw this really curious spike in the stock ownership in these rural areas and relative to urban areas, and that was sort of counterintuitive. And so the more they dug, what they figured out is the questions that they asked, when they asked people if they own stock in these rural areas, some people were confusing it. They didn't think it meant financial stock, they didn't buy it, right? And so, good example of how, you know, when you ask a question, you want to make sure that you're actually tapping the underlying attitude or behavior that you're trying to tap. And if you, if you use a vague question, sometimes you wind up tapping something else. The issue of reliability has to do with how accurately you're measuring that underlying construct. And so, you know, a question is a measurement tool, and just like any measurement tool, it can be imperfect. I use the example of, you know, we've all sort of had a cheap scale at our house that we've stood on, and you stand on it, and it tells you you weigh a hundred and fifty pounds, you step off, you step back on that same scale, and it it tells you you weigh a hundred and fifty-five pounds, right? You step off, suddenly you're a hundred and forty-seven pounds. And, you know, obviously, in those few seconds, you didn't fluctuate weight like that, right? Your, your true value of weight stayed the same. It's just that that scale isn't a particularly accurate tool for measuring your weight, that particular scale. And so reliability has that same application to survey questions, right? We want to make sure that not only are we tapping the underlying opinion we're trying to measure, but there also, that question does a good job of measuring the true value of that opinion in community. And then thirdly, you want to make sure that the survey is representative, meaning that, you know, we're going to do a thousand completed interviews. We want to make sure that those thousand respondents are representative of that larger customer base that you serve. And the way we ensure that is by using a randomized sample, where every unit in the population has an equal probability in being, being selected for the sample. That's the key to inferential statistics, where we can extrapolate based on, you know, a small number of interviews, four hundred, five hundred, a thousand, and know with a certain degree of reliability what the entire customer base is thinking. So there have been a lot of challenges that have cropped up over the years to meeting those three conditions. to meeting those three conditions I just mentioned before. One of the most obvious one is the the that there's a certain percentage of the of people out there who are what I call habitual call screeners, right? This is actually something that's fairly new. Back in the day when I I've been in this business for 20 years, for the first 10 years, we would conduct surveys like this strictly by telephone. And the reason is because everybody had a landline, right? Phones used to be attached to the wall. Nobody had caller ID. And when you rang somebody's phone, you had to go over and pick up the phone and answer to figure out who was on the other end. And when they did that, we had a really good chance of completing an interview. Obviously, things have changed over the last 10 years. You've, you know, got a migration away from landlines to mobile phones. We still do surveys on mobile phones. In fact, probably two thirds of the of the phone interviews we will do will be on mobiles. But what mobile phones have taught us all to do is you don't just answer the phone and say hello, right? You look down and see if you recognize the number. And for some folks, if they don't recognize that number, they will not answer the phone. So that creates a little bit of a barrier to having a truly random sample. You also have things like spam filters, right, where you can have somebody's correct email and you'd send them an invite. But if they've got their spam filters set to Fort Knox, you know, it never makes it through into their inbox and they have to peruse their their spam box to go find that invite. And so that also creates a challenge. And so there's a number of things that that over time have have created challenges for doing these surveys in a way that they're statistically reliable. And I mentioned that because the methodology we use is designed to sort of get around some of these challenges. And so our research approach really breaks down into these three areas. In terms of a sample, we use what's called a stratified random sample of of people who are going to be in your in your service area to make sure it's representative based on their sort of geography, which could be their voting district, their household type and demographics. By stratified, what that means is we don't just choose what's called a simple random sample where we just go ahead and randomize among addresses. We can actually stratify so that we ensure that, you know, a certain percentage of the of the interviews are going to come from one geographic area and a certain percentage are going to come from another geographic area. We've been working with your staff in terms of the the services you provide. We can also stratify based on, you know, is this a household that receives both sewer and trash collection solid waste? Is it just one, right? So we can understand what types of services this household is receiving, et cetera. And by stratifying ahead of time and then randomly picking from within strata, we ensure that those balances stay proportional as they should be. In terms of recruiting, I mentioned we used to do all our surveys by phone. That's no longer the case. We actually use three different methods to recruit customers participate in survey. We have the ability to send them emails. We have the ability to send them a text message invite where if they click a link, they can come in and take the survey online as well as telephone. And so by using three different recruiting methods, we're able to reach people who, you know, they may not answer their phone, but they do check their email or maybe they're they don't have email, but they have a smartphone and we're able to, in a mobile phone, we're able to send them a text invite and they look down, see it, click the link. And so by going after respondents in multiple ways, we're able to sort of get around some of those those barriers I mentioned earlier to to sort of reaching people. In terms of data collection, we are going to allow customers the opportunity just by telephone if they prefer. And otherwise, we're going to allow them to participate online. The the online site is PIN protected. What that means is that you would have had to have an invitation from us to participate in the survey in order to be able to access that site. Once you've completed that survey with that link, you can't take it twice. You can't forward it on to your 10 best friends. So that's what allows us to protect the integrity of the sample. And we are, as was mentioned, going to do 1,000 completed interviews. Now, because that's a random sample of 1,000 and not a census of every customer in your district, it's going to have what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. And in that case, in this case, it's about plus or minus 3%. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results at the end of this process are going to be within 3% of what we would have found had we actually spoken with every single customer in the district. So highly reliable. This final slide here just shows the survey process and timeline. So it shows the stages of the survey process. We're way over here on the left here. Still just in in getting in the initial stages and they're going to go into design here very shortly. But if you take that all the way through the end, it shows the basic stages. It shows all of the tasks that are completed within each stage. And it gives you a basic timeline here. Typically, that's somewhere between two and three months front to back when we do these types of surveys. As we get into periods where there's holidays like Thanksgiving or, you know, you you have a big election here today, we tend not to want to be in the middle of, you know, out in the field, the middle of that. So sometimes we'll we'll have to pause a week or so to 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 deal with the holiday seasons. But again, for the most part, it's about a two to three month process from front to back. And so that's a little overview of the research methodology we're proposing to use as well as the process and the timeline. And let me go ahead and stop sharing here and see if there's at this point any questions for the board about the research process that I might be able to answer.
I have a question, President. When you email or text or or full call a phone number, do you say it's from the Costa Mesa Sanitary District?
Yeah, we do. You might imagine that, you know, when somebody sees an invitation from a public agency, they're more likely to take that survey. They recognize it. They see it as being legit. Although we've been around for 20 years and have a good reputation, I'm willing to bet we're still not quite a household name here at True North Research. And so, you know, if they wouldn't recognize our name, they're far less likely to take the survey.
Additional question, is that the same with an email that you would send out?
Yes, and the invitations are going to be improve going to be, we create them. The district has the opportunity to review and approve them, right? So we don't send anything out that you haven't approved. But we manage the the send and the and the and the distribution process. Just because one of the things when you're using multiple recruiting methods is you want to make sure that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, right? So if we send somebody an email invitation, for example, and they take a survey, the neat thing about our system is that all it's all integrated, our text, our email and our phone system is completely integrated. So that the moment somebody completes a survey, say, in response to an email invitation, we know, don't send them another email, don't text them, don't call them, they're complete, right? If you start separating that system, there's always some sort of time delay such that somebody could be getting a phone call 10 minutes after they completed the survey because the email folks don't know what the phone folks are doing, right?
Okay, one one last question for me. The email or text, do you have that capability yourself or do you have to hire an outside agent to do that for you?
So we do the texting work directly and the email, our data collection, we have a data collection partner that we work with and we've worked with for 20 years. They have handled 95% of our research projects. So when it comes to the phone calls and that integrated system, it sits on their servers, right? But we have the ability to do to program, review programs, send texts, things like that. It's kind of joint.
Okay, no, thank you.
I have a quick question. Tim, it's really more the logistics on the phone calls. Do you have a kind of a a set schedule of times and dates that you call?
Yes, so during the week, we will focus calls during for sort of early evening hours, right? So we're calling typically from about 5:30 to say about 9:00. Because that's when you're most likely to get the full representation of folks in the household. If you just called during midday, for example, your your chances of reaching, you know, a dual working household go way down because, you know, despite the pandemic, just, you know, we're having more people go back to the office harder to reach. And so midweek, we tend to focus it in the in the in the early evening hours. On the weekends, we will focus it during the sort of a broader range of hours because we expect folks are probably going to be there. And then if we can't reach somebody at a certain, like, we call them on a Wednesday at 5 o'clock and we can't reach them, it's an automatic schedule to, you don't call them back at 5 o'clock, you try at 6:30, let's say, right? So it changes the the time at which the phone call is made if you don't reach them the first time at a particular time. And we found that that's a better way of ultimately reaching somebody.
I know in my business, back when I first started my career, we did telephone, we called it telephone soliciting, looking for leads and and customers. We learned very quickly, you don't call during Laker playoffs and you don't call on Monday night between 6 and 9 o'clock. You know why Monday night?
Football.
Monday night football. Some of the rudest comments I've ever heard in my life were calling during Laker playoffs and Monday night football. So I was just curious. You guys are professionals, so I'm sure you know those logistics, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, you know, it's it's interesting because there are some holidays that are unknown, right? You don't do, like Thanksgiving, right? But what's weird is there's some other holidays where we find that actually productivity is really good, right? So the lesser known.
Everybody's home on the holidays. That's the best time to call.
Yeah, so it, I mean, there's some that will, like Thanksgiving, there's a, you know, it feels real intrusive, right? This is family time. You don't call during that. Same thing with the sort of the Christmas holidays. But again, you know, Columbus Day, these sorts of things, fair game, right? And so we're, the last thing our data collection partner wants to do is beat their head against the wall for 10 hours making phone calls, right? And so and getting not getting access. And so we we are selective about dates and dates and times that we do the interview so that they are productive.
Yes. I have two questions. One is, do you have a timeline overall on doing this? In other words, what at 30 days, 60 days, 90, whatever?
Yeah, so actually, if I can, let me pop that back up here, share the screen. So here, right along this bar here gives us a sense of the number of days that we plan to be in each stage. So my expectation is we're right about here now in the process. So we're about to jump into what we call the design stage for the questionnaire. I have about 21 days built in for this mainly because, you know, we're hearing from the citizens advisory committee, hearing from board. Now, we have to sit down and create a draft. And we expect that there's going to be some review of that draft. So I've I've tried to give us a little extra time here at 21 days for that. Once that questionnaire is approved, then we're going to go into translation, programming and testing. So basically getting everything ready to go in terms of fielding the survey. That typically takes about 10 days at the outside. The translation part's really the thing that we have to devote a little extra time to because you have to translate it and then you have to program that version for the phone, program it for the web, et cetera. After that, I expect I've allowed about 14 days for data collection. That's going to be, it could be a little longer depending. I mean, we are going for a very, oh, a large sample size here of 1,000. And so, but 14 days is is my best guess at this point is how long we're going to be in the field to get 1,000 interviews. And then we have seven days for processing the data. At the end of that, we'll have what's called a top line summary. It's essentially, it looks like the questionnaire with the percentage results filled in for each question. And then we need a little bit more time to prepare a full report. That's going to be a detailed question by question breakdown, complete with graphics, subgroup comparisons, et cetera. This is the document that typically, if you, you know, you're going to as a board member, this is the one you'll probably want to read because it it's not just here are the numbers. It provides our sort of explanation for why the question was asked and kind of puts the number, the results in context with other questions. And so, and then after that, we would be coming back to the board with a presentation. And I have that to be determined. It just depends on what the next available board meeting would be for that. So again, that's probably, as I look at that, you're about two and a half months from now, moving forward. And again, we may slip here here and there just based on if there's a holiday that that comes into the page. I don't think we're going to really run into that because if you look forward, we should be into the field before we get into into, you know, obviously Thanksgiving or anything like that, that's a little further out.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. I was just thinking as far as the holidays, you know, coming up and when you are going to be doing this. And also, when you do come back to us, is it the finished project as far as you're concerned? And would you then be letting us see it before it goes out?
So, and I defer to you know, your your processes there about how you share normally, I'll just tell you what I normally do normally. You know, what I want to share back to you is a finished product, right? I don't want to give you a rough draft, right? I want to, I want to be very comfortable with the product. And so typically what happens is I create it. And then we share it with staff. Staff has a chance to vet it and view it. And if there's any tweaks that they that staff thinks need to be made. You know, I'm I'm really good at catching typos, but I'm not perfect, right? So sometimes there's a little bit of that. But and then once everybody's settled with that, then that typically that report becomes sort of a received and file and along with a presentation to the board, which would be a, you'll have the detailed report and then you'll also have a PowerPoint summary that I would give a verbal presentation over, which kind of covers the highlights of of what the study found.
Okay, I have just one more question. That is, when do we get an opportunity to submit some questions if we wanted to?
I think that's today.
Today, today is it? Okay, thank you.
Well, you you have all afternoon. Brett, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So to get your target of 1,000 qualified respondents, how how many, in your experience, how many people are you? I'll call cold calling.
Reach out to.
Yes.
You know, that is going to vary survey to survey. We just finished one for a client where we had a 36% participation rate, which is quite high. And so for that, we needed roughly three times the amount of sample to completes. I would say today's what's much more typical is somewhere in the on the high end, you're you're probably talking about 20% at the most. It's one out of five. On the low end, it could be 5%, right? So one out of 20. I would expect this one to be probably more about the one out of 10, range 1 to 15. This is part of the reason why we stratify our sample is to make sure that we're not just, you know, if you just, because you have this response bias, you need to sort of factor it in and think about it a little bit. Otherwise, you could have a situation, for example, where, hey, it just so happens two thirds of the interviews come from one of your voting districts, right? By chance. We don't allow that to happen. We monitor and protect that. And so if there's a particular area that isn't responding at the same rate as another, we just make sure that we we adjust for that in our recruiting so that it matches.
Got it. Thank you. And then is there room or do you foresee a need to incentivize those to respond?
Um, I I generally do not use incentives.
Okay.
When it comes to public agency work, I find that, you know, normally we find that once people realize it's about their community and it's about services they receive, they're willing to share their opinions about that. We want to be careful. We don't make the survey so long and burdensome to them that they're like, well, I'm never doing that again, right? But, you know, it's it's it's, there's only a few instances where we have incentives, you know, for example, we we just did a, we're in the process doing a big study for the CDC along the border in three different states, California, Mexico, and I'm sorry, California, Arizona and Texas. And, you know, we're asking some pretty sensitive questions. And so for that survey, we felt like you've got to incentivize folks with something to give them, you know, to make them, otherwise there's kind of nothing in it for them, right? And you're asking them things about their health, things about their, you know, the health history and their practices. And so there we're using like $5 per complete incentive. So a pretty big budget for for incentives, but it was necessary, right? But normally for public agency work in California, we do not, we do not use using setups.
All right, great, thank you. And one last suggestion or idea. I know we're here today throughout all of our various questions and stuff. I'm sure we all have basically the same questions we'd like to see revolving around a couple of services. And I know, Timothy, what you said about bringing back the finished product, I I just might suggest we throw out a few of our suggestions today and get some sort of rough draft back to us. Doesn't have to be a whole public, I won't. I don't think it needs to be a whole public meeting, but something we could look at in an email and say, I don't like that. I don't like that. You didn't include that. Just to be efficient and make sure we do have for that final meeting, we're not sitting here debating over two questions. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Kind of a little side comment, Director Echols, we were. Kind of a little side comment, Director Echols, we will get to see the survey questions before they go out. And so we can even kind of begin to evaluate, you know, whether they're sensible to us. But the, the other question I had, well, the other comment I had, sanitary district is working very diligently to improve our communications with the Costa Mesa, our, our, the residents that we serve, mainly Costa Mesa. Would you be willing to share or help us figure out how to enhance our email communications and/or our text communications or, or what, whatever platform we're, we are trying to use to communicate with, you know, with our public?
Yeah, I think there's two ways of, of doing that. One is just through, one of the sections I anticipate would be part of this questionnaire will be focusing on what methods of communication your customers feel would be the most effective for the district to communicate with them, right? This is an area, I can tell you, is probably the area of most rapid change over the last 10 years is the information sources people are using and the, and the technologies they're using for, for communication and, and learning more about the community. It's constantly changing and evolving. And so the survey will give us some, I, I anticipate the survey would have a good snapshot in time of, of kind of where your residents are, are A, turning for their, their local news and information about Costa Mesa and Newport, but also, you know, specifically how the district can be communicate better with them. So that's one level. And I think the other level would have to do with enhancing your database of customers, right? In order to take advantage of some of these digital means of communication, you, you need to have good, solid information on, you know, what are residents' emails? What are their text, their, their mobile phone numbers and things like that? And so there may be some suggestions there as well. You know, we're, right now, we have, we've received the customer database. The main customer database basically is, is based on the assessor's file, right? From what I can tell, because it's the way in which you collect revenues for the district is based on property taxes. And so, you know, that can create some challenges in terms of communication because those individuals aren't necessarily the individuals who are residing in the house. And there's limits to how much contact information is there. And then there you have some other databases that have some, you know, contact information for customers, but certainly not all your customers. And so there may be some suggestions there as far as moving forward, how you can build a more, you know, robust customer database.
Yeah, and I was more referring to the digital access. But, you know, and I realize you're, you'll have a survey question that asks, tries to drill down, you know, what, what, what the customer thinks the issues are. And it, it's usually hard to believe that they're, they're not very interested in, in, you know, they're not, it's not a high percentage of people that are interested in what we do. There are so many more global topics that you catch their attention. Also, I was wondering, do you, do you, do you find that there are certain respondents that like to take surveys and you use them over and over and over?
No, we don't use them over and over and over. I mean, we do surveys all around the state and typically for local jurisdictions. And so obviously, you know, I have another water district, for example, right now that we're working with in another part of the state. You know, once I'm in there, I do their survey and then I'm off somewhere, somewhere else. So we don't use them over and over. In fact, we're careful that when we work in an area where we have done repeat studies, so we have some municipalities, for example, that were, were on an every year basis for doing surveys, we try and structure the samples so that we're getting a different mix of people this time than we were last time, right? So we're not just getting repeat respondents. That said, I will say that there are certain types of individuals that are more likely to take these surveys than others, right? Demographically. And so that's why we also monitor the demographics of our sample to make sure that we're not just getting the, the sort of the low hanging fruit, so to speak, right? The people who are willing and, and more available and more willing to take surveys. We have to sort of reach out and get to those hard to reach folks as well.
Thank you.
President Newton, quick question for Scott. Scott, we already made a rough draft of questions that you're going to submit?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And are you just looking for additional ones? We don't know what you are going to submit.
Primarily we'll, we'll be like, like, Tim mentioned earlier that we will be submitting questions that we submitted in 2019 just to, to engage if we've seen any improvements in the last two years. So, so you can, you know, that's a good resource to, to understand what kind of questions we'll be asking again. And then, of course, this survey, we're looking for some additional questions you want to ask. It's something we didn't ask 2019. Specifically, as we mentioned earlier, like the three card system. We definitely want to know more about the three card system. Would the public be more acceptable to the three card system or won't they? You know, do they have space? You know, these are the kind of information that you're going to need in case we come, bring this back to you, you can make a decision. So if there is something else you wanted to mention, we can do that. I think President Uden talked about, submitted some questions to ask, does, does public know about Orange Coast College Recycling Center? You know, that'd be good to know. And if not, then that's good, good information for us to know. Then maybe we should help advertise that and let people know, hey, you know, you can get, you get compensated for returning recyclables, right? So, so that's what we're looking from the board tonight is what additional questions or what kind of questions you want us to submit to Tim to ask our, our rate pairs?
Yeah, I think you hit all the main topics.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Do any of the board have further questions or discussions?
Do you want those questions now or?
I think, I think staff said, and/or the presenter said he would like them today.
Okay, I, you know, I've been reading.
I don't know if there's any leeway in that, but.
In reading through Chairman Katz's, CAC Chairman Katz, he hit a couple of the things. One of the things that, it's just kind of a personal thing, but we keep saying, are you familiar with the green waste cart? We keep calling it the green cart. All the carts are green. And I just have, I, I, you know, I know, I realize it's because of the top, the line color. But I just wish there was a better way we could identify that cart. You know, maybe I'm being too picky, but it just, it bugs me. We keep seeing green carts. And I think all the carts in my yard are green, even, you know, the mixed, so.
Yeah, the lid is green and it's kind of a bright green and we're, we say organic, people won't know what that means. That's why we try to stick the green waste.
Yeah.
You know?
The, the, the other, I didn't, didn't see this anywhere, even looking back through the 2019 survey. But I would like to see a question regarding people being able to report missed pickups. I mean, the city gets calls, we get calls, CRNR gets calls. I, I'd like to see what level of awareness the community has on who to call if they have a trash problem and even if they have a sewer problem. If they notice an SSO spill somewhere, do they know who to call? I mean, I think that's pretty relevant that there's a certain cadre of people that if their trash doesn't get picked up, they call five people right here.
What they call four people.
They don't call you?
No.
Use your phone number.
What, what goods of president?
His phone's unlisted.
I'm going to give out his number.
I am too.
Not yet.
But you know what I mean, Scott? Question, awareness questions is kind of what I'd like to say.
That's a very good question. Yeah.
That's a good question, though.
We began to talk about, I'm sorry, if, if the other director wants to speak, but we began to talk about the survey when we hired TriPEP. And so I think the, the individual programs that we hired them are maybe an expansion of how we've improved our communications with, with some customers. Because in, in the last survey, there were a couple of items, you know, a couple of questions were, the communication or the interest or the anger went, you know, went down. So.
Director Echols? Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of general topics. I agree with Vice President Schaefer on that. That, that's a good one. Obviously, customer satisfaction with pickup, but, and, and missed pickups and all that, but I agree, something along the lines of reporting and how, at the end of the day, we're here to fix it and make it better. So something along those lines. Also, around your general sewer laterals. I don't think a lot of people understand who's responsible for what and where and when's it stop. You know, something about, well, something, it's a few things I learned over the years. But what, what do you put down the sink? What don't you, what do you put, you know? I mean, there's, I, there's a tremendous lack of knowledge because, I'll say, before I started paying attention to this group a number of years ago, I didn't know it either. So I'm guessing that that's still out there. And then also, well, the, the big stuff, the three card system, we talked about the, also the, sorry, forgetting. But th- those were my big topics. If I come up with another one, I'll interrupt you.
And maybe all the other services we provide. I don't know if you list those already or not.
Okay.
That was in the 2019 survey.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, you know, we have the whole rest of the day and, and maybe the rest of the meeting and to get some ideas. I, I think those concepts and ideas are very relevant.
I think if you, if you can submit your questions by, by the end of the day tomorrow, that'd be great. So then I can submit a draft to, to Tim to finalize.
Directly to you? To you?
Yes, to me. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. President, just, I did remember mine, but rates. Where are you at with, are you comfortable with what you're paying? Do you even know what you're paying? And things around rates, because I, I know we've talked about sewer rates coming up in the future and stuff like that. And obviously your trash rates, so.
That's all I had.
And, and maybe something, you know, well, I think Director Schaefer started to expand on what the potential survey could be as far as citizen concerns. We have a list of criteria that we're going to evaluate CRNR's performance on. I, you know, I don't know if any of those topics, in addition, or as an expansion of what Director Schaefer said. It's also a good time, I think, for us to educate the public, you know, that we do have 22,000 residences, businesses and whatnot that we serve. I mean, you know, we're talking about an extremely small percentage in my mind, you know, that, that are presently not getting the services they, they deserve. And an even smaller percentage is those that are vocal. So I think we need, I think the questions about, you know, the particular concerns, concerns of our service are really relevant. Any other questions for the board? I think Mr. Moser wants to speak to this issue.
And, and one more as a follow-up, if I may, from what you were saying, I mean, literally take our metrics, which we're about to review. That you throw those metrics out there in some forms of questions and
Yeah.
right there, that's, that's a big, that's a big one.
Jim?
Thank you again, President Newton, members of the board. This morning, I reviewed the comments I submitted in connection with your last survey. And I noticed some of those had to do with what Dr. McClary called the reliability. No, I should say validity, validity of the survey as to whether you were asking the right questions to the right people. That, that survey consisted of 500 interviews. And the research firm said that they got the people that they called, the 500, were selected from the voter list for this district. My concern is questions are, you ask about, are you happy with rates? Are you happy about trash? Many of the voters would not be using, they, they may live in an apartment. They may not live in the part of the district that is, has the trash service. And so you don't really want the survey questions to be directed to them. I think we heard that this perhaps is being partly based on the assessment role for the district. And then correlating that with the voter list to get the, be able to contact those people. I'm not totally sure how it would act, work. So, so I would suggest in the survey, it's important to try to verify that the person they're speaking to is actually somebody who's using the district's trash service. If you're asking a question about trash, one way to do that would be to ask, do they put their trash at the curb in a cart? If they do so, they're either, the cart that they're putting at the curb is either a District One or it's a City of Newport Beach One. And that could perhaps be determined by correlating if they know the address, whether it is an address served by us. So I would hope between the voter list and the assessment list, there would be some correlation. But beyond that, to verify that the person actually is using the curb service. And then, secondly, if you ask, is a person is happy with rates? It seems important that the person you're asking is somebody who is actually responsible for paying the property tax bill. So that doesn't seem too intrusive to ask, are they the person responsible for paying the bill? If they're not, their interest in the rate is really not going to be very relevant. So those, those are questions, concerns I had about the validity of the previous survey because it did not, it asked questions, are you happy with the CRNR service? But the person might be getting CRNR service through the Newport Beach contract or they might not be getting it at all. And then, second, I noticed the survey then, and I think it's common, ask at the end, do you have any further thoughts for how to improve the service of the district? If the person being asked is anybody like me, they will have those thoughts after they hang up the phone, not during the survey. And so I think it would be important for the questionnaire to provide or a, how, how, tell them how they can submit their suggestions, not just ask them live to immediately come up with something. Same as you're having trouble coming up with questions right now, the suggestions for improvement would probably come later. And then finally, I had serious concerns at the far end of the survey, how the results were presented in terms of their reliability. We heard this survey will have 3% reliability. The last one, though, sometimes broke down the responses to very, it had the overall response, which is perhaps plus or minus 3%, but then it broke it down into little subgroups. And sometimes those little subgroups had very few people that were in them. So it's comparing the big result to a little subgroup. And if it has only five or one person in it, the accuracy is not 3%. And that was not clearly presented in the final report. So you had results that looked, you were being told they were very reliable, plus or minus 5% there. But they really weren't meaningful at all because they were talking about the response from an extremely small subgroup. So those are my comments that I can think of at the moment. Thank you.
Well, I, I would like to ask Timothy to respond to those initial questions because I believe he did in, in the CAC meeting. Timothy, did you hear the, hear the questions?
Yeah, and, and I'll try and, there are several of them there. I'll head on the ones that I, I think are the ones that we want to address here. Regarding the database and, you know, how do we, how do we go about getting, understanding who it is we're, we're trying to select for the survey and understanding what services they receive from the district? One of the nice things about the district's database that I've already received is for every property, it lists the services that that property receives. So we know address by address, what combination of services are received. And so I, I'm not sure how they did it in 2019. That was a different firm. But we aren't going to call in and then ask somebody to tell us what services they receive by taking that database and then cross referencing and appending the contact information we, we have and be able to do for each property, we'll know in advance, kind of this is somebody who, who receives, you know, trash and sewer, this is somebody who just receives trash, for example, and be able to know that with, you know, accuracy because we have the, the actual address for that particular record. And so that's how we're going to do that. Now, that doesn't mean we might not ask a few sort of awareness questions or clarification questions related to their services, but we should know in advance when we're calling somebody. And we can use that to, to make sure that they're only receiving the appropriate questions in the survey. So if somebody is only a sewer customer and they don't receive solid waste services, a sewer customer and they don't receive solid waste services, they will only receive questions that are relevant to them, meaning they're not going to get, receive solid waste uh, survey questions, right? So that's how we're intending to handle that on this end. Regarding the overall sample size issue, uh, the speaker is correct that, you know, overall on a survey like this with a thousand, uh, completes, that has a, you know, a very small margin of error of plus or minus 3% at the 95% confidence level. As you break that thousand down into different subgroups of customers, right? Based on length of residence or area in the district, the margin of error is going to go up when you're making these subgroup comparisons, because the mark, because that margin error is based on the subgroup sample size at that point, right? Not the overall. So if you take a thousand completes, for example, and just use an example, and then you want to compare males and females, you have roughly 500 apiece. That comparison, when you're estimating, you know, the opinions of males, for example, that's going to be based on 500 interviews, not a thousand interviews. And so the margin of error goes up a bit for that. That's the nature of every survey that is out there. And what we do in our reports is we do in the back of our reports, have a, a section that shows sort of a curve that shows the relationship between marginal and sample size. And we instruct the reader that, look, you know, some of these subgroups are going to have small uh, quantities in them, right? And so just note that and, you know, keep that in mind when you're looking at those, because the margin of error is going to be higher. Right? So we're not trying to gloss over the fact that the marginary increases in subgroup sample size, we're actually calling readers' attention to it. Um, at the same time, it's very useful to be able to look at how opinions vary among the subgroups of customers. And sometimes you see some pretty stark relationships based on area or based on, you know, housing type or some other, uh, customer experience.
Do any of the directors have, oh, Mr. Gilam. Speak, speak into the microphone.
Right, um, I'm not sure if if he, you, him, uh, anyway, did you receive the, the note, the letter from, uh, Elodie?
Yes, it was, he has the data that has been submitted.
Those questions, good, because some of those questions are some of my questions and I'm really eager to see if it falls out. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any of the directors, uh, have any more discussion items for this topic? At this time? If not, you know, uh, if, if you wake up before seven in the morning and have an idea, you might be able to still submit it. Or if you can't go to sleep and you're thinking about this topic, it may help you go to sleep. Um, I think we can move on to item number, I appreciate all the uh, citizen staff and, um, consultant and board input on this. It's a very important topic. Number five, uh, receive and file a quarterly legislative report. Would that be you, Gina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, uh, Staff Member of the Year, Gina Tirano will be giving this report.
Not just for us, but for the whole state, you might mention.
That's right.
You know, I'm thoroughly embarrassed. Good morning, members of the board. Um, before you today is our third quarter legislative update. And the last Friday was the last day for the legislature to pass any bills that are going to go to the governor to sign or veto. And he has until October 10th to do that. Um, as we know, the governor is going through a recall election today. And if he is recalled, the new governor would assume, uh, the position 38 days after the election would be, which would be October 22nd. Um, so today I just wanted to point out a couple of, um, notable bills that have passed the legislature um, and are awaiting the governor's action. So, um, first one is AB 818. Um, this is a bill that we supported and it would require wipes, uh, to contain specified labeling that includes the phrase, do not flush. Um, so it's one that OCSD supported, um, almost all sanitation districts are are supporting it. So we do hope to see this enacted. Um, and then the rest of the bills I'll talk about, these are all on our watch list. So AB 1201, uh, this bill is a bill that would prohibit manufacturers from selling products that are labeled compostable or biodegradable unless they are actually, um, meeting certain standards or are certified to do so. Um, AB 1276 is a bill that would prohibit distributors from giving out single-use foodware and condiments except upon request. So things like plastic utensils, napkins, condiment packets. And SB 240.
I'm sorry, Gina, Bob, can we ask questions? Gina, what she's?
Yeah, if, if you know the question.
I do know the question. That single-use condiment situation, due to the pandemic, most food service establishments went completely away from, you know, salsa bars and e- even at the ballgames, you can't squirt your ketchup or mustard. So they're in kind of a mixed bag here. If, if, if this bill passes, they can't give you a packet of mustard, for example, but you also can't squeeze it out of the because of CDC and pandemic. How am I going to get my mustard or my hot dog?
It's, it specifies upon request. So they'll only give it to you if you ask for it.
You ask for it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Similar to the, like the straws and things like that.
Some places doing that now.
They don't give out utensils. Yeah, or the, I, I know that if you go into a restaurant, there's no salt and pepper on the, you have to ask for salt and pepper and then they bring, so that's part of the, the whole thought process.
Is that for him to consider signing or not?
Yes.
So I think it's on his desk.
Okay. Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
It's a good one.
Um, so SB 244, um, this is a bill that would prohibit disposing lithium ion batteries in trash containers. Um, it also has requirements for trash haulers to conduct specific training on how to handle battery-related fires. Um, SB 594.
Question, Gina, is that already a regulation? You can't put them into trash containers now?
Um.
Because we don't allow that.
No.
We don't allow it, but I think this would create more, um, repercussions for it. I don't, I don't know the exact repercussions off the top of my head, but.
Okay, sounds good.
Could I ask Mr. Carey a question on that? If you know, Mike, the facility, the Mur facility and are you guys pretty well-trained on lithium batteries? Do you know, recognize and?
Yeah, they're, they're trained in being able to recognize them and then we're labeling the carts not, residents not with batteries.
All right, okay.
Batteries of any sort?
Any sort, that's good.
That's why we have our programs at schools.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And so the next bill is SB 594, and, uh, this is an important one because it would update our deadline for redistricting to April 17th, 2022. Um, there was a typo in the report, it said 2021, so I'll correct that now. And so, uh, this is because the district's regular election coincides with the statewide November 2022 election. I know that our district council, Alan Burns, is keeping an eye on this, so we might be getting some updates from him shortly. Um, and those are, those are all the major ones that I had to point out. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do any of the board members have questions or discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just on our pose on AB 59, so that did, uh, pass and it's on the governor's desk, is that correct? We have it as opposed, the mitigation, uh, fee act.
But it didn't get out of committee? Or did I misread that?
The last I checked.
That's a state one.
I thought it was stuck in committee. I'll double check on that.
Okay.
I think it got stuck in committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I'd be curious about, especially since we took a position on it.
I have a question.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the congressional ones, the HR 535. Can you update exactly what that means? The Essential Services Act.
Yeah, so we've been tracking this one for a while. I don't believe there's been any movement on it, but it was supposed to get special districts funding, um, as part of the CARES Act. Um, because there wasn't very specific funding for special districts. So, um, I believe it was going to be up to cities and counties to allocate a portion specifically to special districts.
I think they talked about it at the conference last week too, but I'm just curious if we're going to be receiving any.
I've been checking, I don't, I haven't seen much movement.
Okay. A good job.
Arlene? Almost forgot.
On SB, uh, 594, on the election, local redistricting, you can go to CSDA website and you can get all the information you need on that. Um, the name who is following is Anthony, he's with our legislation, uh, staff at CSDA. And he's real thorough on staying with it.
That redistricting, no, isn't going to affect this next election in 2022, is it? It is going to affect it.
Yes.
Only if we decide to go back to elections in general. I'm, like I'd asked Alan at the last meeting. I mean, we're still moving. We, we are still moving and there's no change to go away from districts at this point for our to go to divisions. We're still in that mode, right? I don't, Scott Allen had said that we have the opportunity to go back to city or district-wide elections. I thought this bill would erase all the districts.
I think his suggestion is to stay the course.
That's what Alan, yeah, no, that's, that's my point is we are staying the course with, with divisions.
Yes.
Okay.
As a follow-up to that though, doesn't this, we have to redraw again?
Oh, based on the census, yes.
Based on, that's, that's part of the, that's a total, uh, legislation is.
That's what, that's what I was referring to, is not going to affect this next election in 2022.
See, all this is on the website for CSDA.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the complicating factors is the people that are, and, and we've talked about this at OCOG. The, the people that are doing the demographics are few and far between. I mean, Deborah Deep is the authority we've used for the, for the research and she's totally booked out. So, and, and she really is the, the only one in Orange County that's reliable enough to, to do what we need done, so.
Well, I, I think Alan did say that she would make time for us.
Yeah. For you.
She make time for the most needy directors.
That's right. You.
I would like her to help me with communication with my public.
I'll help you with that.
Main, mainly people calling me. Um, let's see, what item were you on? Uh, did, do, do any of the directors, Jim, do you have a comment on this?
Uh, yes, I have a comment on legislation that is not on this list. And it's, uh, if true, would be really critical to this district. A- as you may know, in Newport Beach, we are considering how to comply with SB 1383. Uh, one option it would seem would be for Newport Beach to adopt the same two-cart system that you have here. Uh, the public has not heard a full-blown presentation about this yet, but at a public meeting, one of the staff people trying to gear the public up for the three-cart system was told that this was not an option because the mixed-waste cart requires use of a dirty Murph and that the state legislature had outlawed dirty Murphs. I tried to research that, I could not find any past legislation that outlawed dirty Murphs where mixed waste is sorted and recovered. Uh, according to CRNR with fairly good results. Uh, so I'm wondering if the district is aware of any bill that has been passed that is requiring dirty Murphs to end. Uh, I can't imagine, since the state encourages recycling, it would prohibit a private person from doing such an operation, but it could conceivably prohibit public agencies from using one. So i- is there any past legislation that at some future date is going to outlaw dirty Murphs? Or are we aware of any proposal in the legislature to do that? Thank you.
Well, I think, Jim, there's wording in the, um, 1383 legislation that will change the nature of the Murphs. And, and my suspicion is, is, is because of that. So I, I think, I, I don't know if, uh, if you can help us with, help me with this, Mike, but there's a turn, a new term for Murphs that.
Yeah, Mr. President, I can, I can address that issue. So the, the law, SB 13, it does not outlaw mixed-waste carts that we currently use. However, if, if a jurisdiction does use mixed-waste carts, you have to justify to CalRecycle that the materials is taken to a high diversion facility.
Yeah.
And so that is where the issue I think CRNR is having, well, can, and that's the question we're trying to determine from CalRecycle, what do you consider a high diversion? And so that's what we're trying to clarify from CalRecycle. So, so yes, Newport Beach could go to mixed-waste cart, but again, they have to demonstrate to CRNR that the materials are taken as to a high diversion facility.
Isn't that high diversion tied to the, the benchmark, the 75% benchmark that they have to? The facility has to be able to prove that that mixed weight has, mixed waste has 75%?
Yes.
That, that's what CalRecycle is gearing towards, my understanding, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Does Newport Beach have a, a green waste cart?
No.
That would be okay.
We do, which really helps our situation.
Yeah, we're, we're in discussion with Newport Beach staff, uh, on implementing SB 133 because uh, of our services in part Newport Beach. And so they are, um, uh, pouring, um, drastically changing the way they, they change their, uh, collect their trash, go into a cart system, uh, where it looks like they're, they're look like they're employing a three-cart system is what they're.
Are they on? Does the, uh, 15th Street, you know, the spot for Newport Beach Jones, where, you know, where they, where they dump their trash? You know, when I talk about that facility at 15th Street.
Superior.
Superior, is that superior?
Superior, yes, yes.
Okay, does that have a permit for green waste?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, I think, I don't believe it is, but they're trying to get a permit for green waste.
Okay, good. That would be something, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, do any of the other directors have questions on this item? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Gina. We'll move on to, um, receive and file CRNR's benchmark measures progress report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on July 13th, uh, 2021, the board directors proved a list of benchmark measures to engage on the performance level, uh, for the next six months of CRNR. Uh, the board directs staff to report back, uh, CRNR's progress report on a monthly basis. So before you is the August uh, monthly report. Actually, so, um, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of the directors have questions?
Just one, one real quick one, if I could.
Go ahead.
On the July, July, are you attributing that to Fourth of July holiday? The high level?
Not, no, not necessarily. It's just, it's the whole month.
Yeah, I realize that, but I would imagine because of the confusion over July 4th being a Sunday and all that.
I'm sure that that was a factor, but it's not the sole factor.
Okay.
It's been an ongoing situation.
Yeah, that's, thanks.
Well, I had a question, I can't, I can't get to my, uh, computer. It, it won't talk to me anymore than the citizens will. You had, you had a number in there that refers, uh, either to a semi-annual or an annual criteria. And I think it was, uh, something to do with missed trash carts. And my question is, is, is that, is that an annual number? On the missed mixed-waste carts, or is that a six-month number?
The direction from the staff or from the board is to bring back six months' worth of data. So right now we have two months' worth of data of missed trash carts. So, uh, by, by, uh, uh, January, uh, we will have six months' worth of data for you to evaluate the, the level of performance, uh, by CRNR.
On, on, on missed trash carts?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President. Brett? Scott, I just want to clarify that uh, August went down, which is, which is good news. Scott, I just want to clarify that, uh, August went down, which is, which is good news. The, for the six month, uh, the total complaint, the benchmark's at one seventy-four, correct? And we're, we're at, uh, one thirty in two months, so.
Right.
That's, that's going, we'll see what happens over the next several months. Um, and then, uh, the other one was, um, the timeline to get the, uh, Newport Beach transfer seat. We, we still haven't gotten a timeline even.
No, unfortunately, we haven't. This has just been an ongoing issue with, with, with CRNR and Newport Beach, and they just haven't given us a, a timeline, and I don't, I, we talked to Newport Beach, we talked to CRNR, and no one gave us a straight answer.
Well, Newport has the answer to this, don't they?
Again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, issue with the scales, and I don't know exactly what it is, but, you know, they have to come to an agreement on, on the scales.
It's gone on for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's gone on for a while.
Quite a while, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, I looked up public scales, and there's scales, scales are as close as Tustin. Public scales are generally all over the place, so I, I expect it would be more on, on Newport Beach policy, whether or not they'll share that station and then how it'll be done. Uh, I, I wouldn't suspect CRNR will be able to answer that question in a, in a timely manner, so I'm not sure the, the request is, 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 is that important, at least to me. Any other questions?
Uh, on, on that, I mean, true, we're dependent on Newport, which doesn't answer to us, but, um, I mean, not to be able to get it, it, it just leads me to believe that there's been no further discussion from CRNR and Newport. That bothers me. CRNR should be able to say, hey, we've met with Newport three times, or we've met zero times, and here's our next steps. That's what I would be looking for from this benchmark. What are we doing to get this thing rolling? If it's been around for two years, let's, let's get some answer. So if they're not going to apply to that benchmark, then that will be considered against.
Yes, I think schedule is, is, you know, is important, and, you know, what, how, how that'll work out.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, any other questions by the board or public on this issue? If not, uh, oral communications and directors' comments, uh, do, does the board have any oral, oral communications and comments? Oh, I have a couple. Um, I'm, I'm wondering from staff if you can give us an idea on when the next solid waste add-on meeting might, might be?
I don't know, we'll have to look at our schedule and set someone up.
Okay, and, and, and I think, um, we, we have, have dropped our monetary support, maybe for budget reasons, uh, for OCC's, uh, handling of HHW, um, light bulbs and other items. Um, i- i- I guess, guess I'm looking for is, is the budget of potential, you know, to, how much did we, how much do we save by, uh, not supporting those efforts?
Fifty thousand? Fifty thousand dollars. So it was significant, and we consider that the residents can put out their, their light bulbs and batteries in the front door, in the front of the, uh, curb and get it picked up. It's a little more convenient than taking it to OCC. We believe in most of the materials they're getting, we're not CMSD residents, and so you're subsidizing someone else's paint job on them off. That's why we, we just, we recommend discontinuing that program there. Because you have the door-to-door HHW collection, but which is way more convenient than dropping it off at OCC.
I, I would say that that would be exactly opposite in my mind. Me taking it over to OCC and dropping it off is another issue because I take a lot of recyclables over there. Trying to get through the process of contacting CRNR has historically not been nearly as easy as, as the two minutes extra that I would spend taking it to OCC. Anyway, do any of the directors have any other?
While we're on that topic, what is the cost per pickup for CRNR to pick up those?
It's part of the rates, so I don't have a cost percent. It's part of the rates that, that the residents pay, uh, on their assessment.
I mean, don't they charge us additional fee every time that they don't?
No, it's part of the rates.
Okay, that's a good deal.
Exactly, so that's what we're saying. It's, it's, it's already being paid for, so why, why pay additional fifty thousand dollars at OCC?
Yeah, Bob, the new process that they have is really good. I tried it like a month ago. Just went on, emailed it, they sent me back that email, when do you want to pick that? They, they told me, I put it out there, it was the easiest process I've ever been through. Should try it, it's really good. So I think, I, I called Scott and told him right away, it was a really easy process.
I'm, I'll just give him my telephone number.
I'll, I'll give it to him if you want.
Actually, actually, I have a second home and up one, and I, and I take these items there. Uh, I will, I will try to go through the process, and, and I am very pleased to hear that, you know, it, it, it's easier than uh, I've historically encountered.
No, it's easy. You just tell them what you have. They ask you what items you put out. They tell you when to put them out, they pick them up the next, whenever they make the date, and you go out there and it's gone.
Yeah, I think this is, would be a good article for the newsletter, um, because historically, it's, it's been a little more difficult process.
The new process, if it's new, is really easy.
Is, is it by telephone or email or?
Uh, it's both, I think, it's not, both, you can either do the phone or through an email process.
Why, I really appreciate those services.
You need help on email, I'm sure we can help you with that as well. Um, I, I, I just want to pass on, on the, on our Facebook presence with the large item pickup. It's really good. I mean, you guys are getting the word out. Is there any way we can get some kind of report through CRNR on if that effort is causing an uptick in, in large item? I did have one resident who happens to be related to me, my little brother, who had a lot of difficulty in getting a big item pickup done. I mean, he couldn't get through to CRNR. I'm, I'm not saying there's anybody's blame, but he, he was just having some difficulty two weeks ago trying to get a, a, a large item. But what I'm asking for is, with this increased presence on Facebook and sharing more about large item, if CRNR could, if we could get some reports from CRNR, whether or not the volume has gone up on the pickups.
Yes, we, we are aware of the difficulties some residents have been having, um, scheduling large item collections, and we've had discussions with CRNR on, on revising their policies, which they're open to. So, uh, we're hoping that once they implement those new policies, we'll, we'll see a, a fewer, fewer complaints about that service.
It, it's one of the best programs we have.
It's, and it's one of, it's one of the programs, it's probably most well-known in the community. We, we, when we do our survey, uh, to the residents, most people who've been surveyed are well-aware of the large item collection program.
Any other, uh, comments or communications from the directors? If not, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation.